... into this public hearing. This public hearing sponsored by the Committee on Guam U.S. Military Relocation, Public Safety, and Judiciary is hereby convened. The items on the agenda, or the item on the agenda is Bill Number 326-33COR, which is relative to the statute of limitations in cases involving child sexual abuse. In compliance with the public notification, the open government law, the initial dissemination of information was provided to our community and the public hearing notice was sent out on the 20th of June. And the second notice was sent out on the 23rd of June to the stakeholders as well as to the community. In light of that, I would like to extend my appreciation as the chair to our media partners for disseminating this information with regards to this particular public hearing. We do have, like I mentioned, Bill Number 323-33, but before I recognize the sponsor of that legislation, I would like to thank the vice chair of the committee, Senator Tom Adda, for joining us. To my immediate left is Senator Frank Blas Jr., the sponsor of the proposed legislation. Thank you very much, Senator, for joining us. Senator Nerissa Underwood to his immediate left, and then Senator Mary Torres to Senator Tom Adda's immediate right. As we proceed, this is going to be the sequence of the format. I will allow the sponsor to be able to provide opening comments with regards to his proposed legislation, and then I will call up witnesses based on the sign-in sheet. We do have a good number of witnesses that will be providing testimony today. So I thank you all for your interest in this piece of legislation. So I will now recognize Senator Frank Blas Jr., who's the sponsor, primary sponsor of Bill Number 326. Senator?
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. And good morning to everyone. I want to begin by thanking the committee chairman, Senator Frank Huggins, for holding this public hearing to discuss Bill 326, which I introduced last month. I have been working closely with Senator Huggins on the matter, and I am pleased that he is looking at ways, he and I are both looking at ways to strengthen the language of this legislation. I'd like to take a moment to recognize everyone who has shown up this morning to testify, or even just to listen, to the lay groups pushing for change and accountability in our community. I want to thank you for your actions and tenacity. Most importantly, though, I want to thank the victims of sexual abuse and their families, especially those who have had the courage to come forward and share their stories. Your bravery is inspiring. I will continue to keep all of you in my prayers. As everyone knows, the issues involving statutes of limitations have been particularly pressing problem in light of the delicate nature of child abuse, child sex crimes, considering that victims often need many years to overcome the pain of their abuse and time to obtain the courage needed to speak out about the abuse that they have suffered. Sadly, many victims of child sexual abuse have not been able to proceed with civil claims against the perpetrators because those claims have been barred by statute of limitations. Once passed, this legislation will give these victims increased access to the legal system. I look to, I look forward to hearing from all of you on this bill, and I am ready to work with my colleagues in passing this important piece of legislation. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Senator Blas. I would like to, before I call up the following individuals, I also would like to, I noticed several victims in the audience, and I would like to personally thank you very much for having the courage to provide testimony during this public forum. I think it's very important that our people understand, and especially innocent victims, our children, understand that their government, their family, and the system that is in place should be in place to benefit them, if in fact any incident were to occur to them. And it really speaks volumes in terms of the bravery that Senator Blas has taken, undertaken by introducing this piece of legislation, because it is opening or lifting a statute of limitation that would allow child, innocent victims, who were at one time affected, to step forward and use the system to their benefit, so that in fact, the issue is not really any financial retribution, or restitution, or compensation. It is making sure that future victims, or future youth or children are not affected in a similar way. And I think that that speaks volumes in terms of why we are here today. So I want to thank the sponsor for allowing the chair to be able to work in concert with him, and whatever product comes out of the committee, I assure you, is ultimately going to address the objective of this proposed legislation. So as I call up the following individuals, please step forward, take a seat, and I would like to invite Mr. Walter Denton, Mr. Rollin Sundia, Ms. Doris Concepcion, and Ms. Charlene Santos Bamba. Please, if you can, join us up front. I'm going to ask all of you, as you speak, you speak into the mic, ensure that the red light is turned on. You identify yourself for the record initially, and then provide your testimony. The first individual that was called up is Mr. Walter Denton. Mr. Denton, please, if you can pull the mic in, you can begin.
My name is Walter G. Denton. I was raped by the Archbishop of Agua Guan, who at the time was a priest and a pastor in Ague. I trusted him, I worshiped the ground he walked on. He was my mentor, he was my teacher. So I thought, he was like a father to me. He was the priest I wanted to become, but he took all of that away from me. I am here today to tell you, esteemed senators, my story, and the one that had defined my life ever since, and the hope and prayer that you will pass, Bill 326-33. I was only 12 years old when I was raped by Father Aperon. I was an altar boy for my village in Ague. Being an altar boy motivated my desires to serve God and to become a priest. I may have been young, but I knew that was my calling. In the evening of April 16, 1977, I spent the night in the rectory with Father Anthony to help prepare the church for Sunday services. Father Anthony and I had dinner in the rectory that evening. After dinner, I helped Father Anthony put away the dishes. After cleaning up the dishes, I went into the living room and sat on the lazy boy and watched a little bit TV. I started to feel tired and sleepy. I pulled the handle of the lazy boy, and I got it to recline. As I was laying on the lazy boy chair, Father Anthony came into the living room and asked me if I was ready to go to sleep. I told him yes. That I was ready to go to sleep on the chair. He said no. He insisted I sleep with him in the bedroom. And I said, okay, Father. Sometime late that night, or early morning, I woke up feeling something or someone on He was smothering me, and I felt something going in me. And it was hurting me. I was pinned down to the bed on my stomach with my legs spread apart. I could not move. I could not move my arms or my legs. I was pinned down. I felt something going in me, and it hurts so much. I shouted out to please, please stop. I kept shouting out, and I tried to move, but all I could feel was him on top of me, thrusting something in me. He told me it would be all right. He finally stopped, and he laid down on me like he was resting. He finally got off me, and I immediately got off the bed. I was crying, I was breathing hard. I could feel my butt was all wet. I asked him, why did he do that to me? I kept asking why. And he said, if I said anything to anyone, that they would not believe me. That night changed my life forever. It had changed my direction in life where I wanted to be today. On December 24, 1977, right before the Ague midnight mass, I was walking with Father Jack Nealon to the front of the church, and as we were walking, that was my opportunity to tell Father Jack what Father Tony did to me. After telling Father Jack what he did to me, he just looked at me, and he said, well, Walter, he said, lonely, he said, the priest's life is a lonely life. From that moment, I knew that nothing was going to get done, and that Father Tony's words started to sink in that nobody would believe me. After that nightmare of my ordeal, I never went back to serve in Ague Church as an altar boy. Around spring between 1999 and 2000, I was stationed at Fort Lewis, Washington State, and I was assigned to the 47th Combat Support Hospital. I lived in base housing on Fort Lewis. One day, I had planned to do some yard work, and I needed a few pieces of equipment, so I went, so I went to the self-help store to pick up a lawnmower and a rake, and I met this Chumora guy, who worked there, issuing out the equipment. I told him that I was from Guam. We talked for a little bit, and he mentioned to me that the Bishop of Guam was coming over to his mother's house, who lived right there in Tacoma, Washington. He told me that they were all related, and he invited me to see Bishop Aperon. I decided to go, because I wanted to confront him. After I got to his house, we all waited for Bishop Aperon to arrive. He came in and started greeting everybody. I was in the back of the house waiting for him to make his rounds, and eventually, he made his way up to me. And I asked him, do you remember me? And he looked at me and said, Michael? I said, no, Bishop. I said, it's me. I said, it's me, Walter Denton. I said, now, do you remember me? His eyes got big, like he was, like he was very surprised, like in shock. And I told him that I needed to speak to him. And I said, I need to speak to you now. So he waited a couple minutes, made his rounds, and he just, he finally made his way back to me. And then we left the house. So we went through the front of the house, went down the steps, and we went walking around the block. It was probably over an hour that I took my time with him. I asked him, do you remember what you did to me? And I asked him, why? I said, why did you do that to me? Why didn't you rape me? And I told him that you took away everything that I, you took my dreams away, away from I started to break down, and I told him that I would never forgive him for what he did He started to break down as well. But that, that didn't matter to me. What he was feeling then didn't matter to me because of what he did to me. We eventually made our way back to the house. As we walked inside the house, I told him that I had to leave now. I had to go back to my, I had to go back to my kids. As I was about to walk out the door, he stopped me for a moment. He said, wait, Walter, I have something to give you. So he turned around and reached into his bag, and he pulled out a picture of himself and a CD, and a picture of Mother Mary. He said, I want to give this to you. I took it from him, and I looked at him. I said, are you serious? A picture of yourself and a CD. I took the items, and I left the house. Then I went home to my children. But I said to myself that this won't be the last time you hear from me again. On June 7, I came back to Guam to tell my story, how Archbishop of Guam raped me when I was only 12 years old, when I was an altar boy in Ague. By having a press conference on the steps of the Pastoral Center, immediately after the press conference, I turned around and walked towards the front door of the Pastoral Center to deliver a copy of my statement, but the doors were locked, although there is a sign that said the door was open. On the morning of June 12, surely before I departed with my wife back to return back to Arizona, I marched with the CCOG, the Lady Forward Movement in the Silent No More, and others to protest Archbishop Aperon to resign. During the protests, I was surprised to see Archbishop Han and another priest, who came out to say a few words to the protesters. I immediately felt I had to reach out to this new Archbishop where he was, where they were standing. I was standing to the right, less than 10 feet away. I know they could see me. I reached over and got the attention of the other priest, his assistant, to tell him that I would like to speak to Archbishop Han. I told him my name, and I said that I was one of the victims. To me, they ignored my request. They turned around and went inside the cathedral. We followed them to see what was going on. When I heard, and when I heard from Archbishop Han in his opening remarks, something to the effect that these protests, these protesters will go away in a couple weeks, or it would die I was angry. I grabbed my wife's hand, and I said, let's go. We left the church, and we headed back up to the airport. I was so angry and so hurt from being rejected. It's been a couple, it's been more than a couple of weeks when we left, and still, to this very day, I have not heard from anyone, not from Archbishop Han, even to just simply reach out to see how we're doing. How long do you think, how long do you think it takes to be raped? For, for the victims of Ague, the sexual assault or rape can last up to 20 minutes, 10 minutes, even as long as just a mere five minutes. For me, it, it felt like eternity. That's how long it took the attacks to end. But for every rape victim, it takes just a moment, a millisecond, to cross a threshold from someone who is raped, from not being raped to getting raped, and to have the most private parts of his or her mind and body violated in an irreversible from before to after, a moment that can never be undone or justified, a moment that will live on within, within me forever. There has not been a single day in my life that I did not relive the things that he did to me. It's not a single day that went by that I don't think about it. You know, people ask me, why now? I say, why do you wait so long to come out, to say something? Well, I did. I did come out a long time ago. I came out when it first happened to me, but no one would listen, not even the priest that I trusted. So yeah, the bishops were sunk in, that no one was going to listen. I read that more, that most sexual assault survivors don't report the crime right away, especially if the predator is someone they know. This applies to about four-fifths of cases here in the United States. In this case, it applies to me, as well as other victims of Ague. Even when survivors do go to their church officials or to, to the police, they routinely fail to fully investigate the claims of sexual abuse. Nationwide, as many as 500,000 rape kids are still waiting to be tested. Years would pass, and the statute of limitations would bar a victim from having his day in court and to confront his accusers. So these victims bury it and suffer in silence, just as I have. Bill Number 326-33, introduced by Senator Frank Blas, and now before your committees, Senator Frank Huggins, will give the victims of sexual abuse within or outside the Catholic Church the opportunity to be silent no more, because it now gives them some recourse to be heard. It would give victims like myself, Roy, Sonny, Roland, our parents and families, and to those victims too afraid or intimidated to come forward for fear of being called a liar and arrogantly mocked by a powerful Archbishop, his advisors and allies in the Catholic Church, some measure of justice and closure to the heinous crimes that was inflicted on them. The scar will never go away, but it can at least start to heal. As it stands, the current law protects the predator from his past crimes once the statute of limitations kick in. It protects these predators who commit these heinous crimes of rape and child sex abuse from being sued or prosecuted. I am asking each of you, every senator, to please lift the statute of limitations so that people like Anthony Sablon Aperon and any other person or institution who have aided him or covered up for him will be held accountable for the crimes they have committed against innocent children, like I was then. Moreover, we need to deter future predators from committing these heinous crimes by eliminating any time limitations on their right to sue or prosecute, no matter how long ago. So please, give us Ague Boys a chance to achieve some measure of justice and closure in our lives. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Denton, for your testimony. In light of the nature of your testimony, I'm going to give it a few seconds, and then we will call up Mr. Sundia to proceed with his testimony. Mr. Sundia, you're recognized.
My name is Rollin Paul Lizama Sundia, age 54, Ague, Guam. I am here to urge that you pass Bill Number 326-33. When I was an altar boy at Our Lady of Mount Carmel Church in Ague, at the age of 15 years old, I was sexually assaulted and abused by our pastor and priest during a sleepover at the Mount Carmel Rectory. In the summer of 1977, in the middle of the night, I was sexually molested by then-Father Anthony Sablon Aperon. It was around 1:00 a.m. in the middle of the week, when a couple of altar boys and I were asleep on futons in the living room floor at the Mount Carmel Rectory. I was awakened when I felt someone tapping on my shoulder and calling my name. I looked up, and it was Father Anthony Aperon. When he saw that I, that I woke up, he whispered, saying, Rollin, I need your help with something. He then gestured me to follow him and led me into his bedroom. I didn't think anything of it, of the situation, because we were there to help the priest. The room was dark, and as I walked toward him, I asked him if everything was okay, and he motioned me to sit down. He sat next to me and put his hand on my shoulder. His hand was shaking, and I started to feel very uncomfortable. He then said with a trembling voice, Rollin, I need your help. He then said that of all the altar boys, I was the, the one that he can trust, trust the most, and I was the one that he could rely on the most. I told him that me and the boys are here to help out in any way that we can. that me and the boys are here to help out in any way that we can. After a brief silence, he then said to me, "Do you want to try me?" I was very surprised and confused at what I thought he said. So I said, "Excuse me, Father, I didn't quite hear you." He then put his arm around my shoulders and pulled me closer, saying, "Do you want to try me?" Before I could do anything, he suddenly reached over and started rubbing and groping my privates. I told him to stop, but he didn't. Instead, he continued on, and this time squeezing my penis, and kept saying, "Just try me." It was painful and shocking. I tried to turn and kept pushing his hand away, but he held me even tighter. It was very strong. I don't know how, but I found the strength in me to break free and ran to the door and out of his room. I grabbed my belongings and ran out of the house. I went home crying. I was in shock, confused, and humiliated. This was the priest that I had always looked up to and was highly respected and revered by his Aggett parishioners. I trusted this man. Now he just abused and assaulted me. I didn't know what to say and do. I was too ashamed to tell my parents or friends. I felt that no one would believe me, especially my parents and the other my uncles. I had no idea or suspected that there were others. I thought I was the only one. I kept this dark secret with me for 39 years. I just tried to bury it, and I kept it from my wife, my kids, my parents, my siblings, and my friends. Years later, when I was working at the PDN building, now the DNA building, I would always pass and look at the cathedral where Father Aperon was to be ordained a bishop. I wondered then how the Catholic Church would make someone like Father Aperon a bishop. It was hurting me and making me mad. I stopped going to mass for a while because of it. I couldn't imagine how a man like Father Aperon could sit up there in that tall chair at the cathedral and pretend to be holy. How can he give out communion and hear confessions? That just disgusted me. It wasn't until I read Walter's statement that I realized that I was not the only one. Then I found out Roy was abused as well, after by chance I happened to be talking to him. It was weird how all these events and coincidences kept happening. I realized then, perhaps, that God was asking me to come forward. I was not alone. There actually were others. As you know, I came forward and told my story on June 15, 2016. After my press conference, I tried to submit my statement addressed to the Archbishop, to the Pastoral Center, but I was locked out, even though it was supposed to be open. The same thing that had happened to Walter happened to me. The Church was not going to make it easy for me or any other victim to come forward. Instead of reaching out to Roy when he first came out, Archbishop Aperon and his representatives instead called him a liar, saying that he was induced to make false statements, false testimonies by a conspiracy to smear and destroy Archbishop Aperon and the Catholic Church. That was the most ludicrous thing I have ever heard, and it made me mad and more determined to come out. Then they said the same thing about Doris, practically mocking the fact that Sonny was dead so he can't testify himself. That was horrible and vicious for Archbishop Aperon and his representatives to say. How can anyone imagine that a frail and old woman, the mother of a fellow altar boy, would come forward and talk that way about his dead son unless it was true? Then Walter came forward, and I expected then for the Church to finally acknowledge these victims and take appropriate and decisive action. But nothing again, no retraction, no act, no action, nothing at all. No one from the Archdiocese or Archbishop Han has reached out to me personally or informed me that my statement was being forwarded to Rome. I found out through the media. I feel that we do not exist in the eyes of the Church. They are good at press releases, video releases, and telling their victims that they are liars and nothing else. Senators, I never told my wife and my family the details of my sexual abuse by Father Aperon until a few days before I came forward. I know there are others, and not only in Aggett, but with the reception that Roy, Doris, Walter, and I received by the hands of the Archdiocese so far, it is no wonder that they are reluctant and fearful to come forward. I support the lifting of the statute of limitation on child sex abuse so that victims of sexual abuse will know and have a tool to fight back and find justice. We need it not only for existing victims, but future victims as well. We need to abolish any kind of statute of limitations of sex abuse crimes so that potential perpetrators will know that no amount of time will prevent a victim from coming forward to sue and for the government, government to prosecute. We pray and hope that upon the passage and signing of this bill, other victims will come forward so that they can begin the long world road towards healing and recovery. We have to repair our past, contain the present, and protect our future, our children. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Sundia. And once again, in light of the testimony this morning, I'm gonna give it just a few seconds. And we're doing this intentionally for everyone in the audience just so that we don't just move on to the next testimony and that there's a recognition of testimony that was provided here, especially in light of the courageous effort. Ms. Concepcion, you're recognized.
Good morning, senators. My name is Doris Yermeschea Concepcion. My son is Joseph Anthony Canatha. He was born December 9, 1977. I am here to testify in favor of Bill 326-33 to remove the statute of limitation for child sex abuse. On May 5, 2005, my son, Attac, Attac and I were in the elevator on our way down to surgery. We knew he had a 30% chance of living. He had, he was dying of perforated intestine. He kept saying to me, "Mama, am I really the devil, son?" And I said, "No, you're not." One may just make, what brought this up? He said, "Mama, I love you, and I'm sorry." I said, "I love you too, son, but you're not the devil, son." He said, "Aperon told me I am the devil, son." He says, "Mama, please hold me." And just as I bent down, he said, "I have to tell you something. Aperon molested me when I was an altar boy in Aggett." I'm sorry. Then he looked at me again, and he said, "I'm so sorry for being so mean to you, Mama, but Aperon said I will never amount to anything in my life unless..." I read the Bible with him and spent the night with him. I trusted Aperon. Whenever he called me, he would say, "I need your son's help to set up the sanctuary to do something." I did stuff for Aperon. The mothers, Roy's mother, my mother, and I would cook for him because he wanted things for the altar boys. And he betrayed me. My son said, "Mama," he heard me over and over again. I literally fed my son to the wolf, and I didn't know what he was doing to him. As the door was opening, I looked at my son, and I said, "Did Aperon rape you?" Before he could answer the door, elevator doors opened, and he gave me the thumbs up. And that was the last time I saw my son, and the last time I spoke with him. This has been weighing for 11 years with me. I didn't know what to do. I didn't know where to go. But as I celebrated his 11th anniversary, May 5, the thought of Mount Carmel Church, Aperon, and my son kept coming to mind. I couldn't put the pieces together. I didn't know what was going. I couldn't connect the dots. And then my sister called me up that evening, and she said, "Have you turned on the TV to watch PDN and the internet?" And I said, "No." I said, "Why? What's going on?" He goes, "Roy Cantinija is on the, on TV. Turn it on and listen to him." And I knew right then and there that it was my son saying, "It's gonna be okay, Mom. Roy and the rest of the guys are gonna take care of it." Nobody knew I was coming forward. I knew I had to do something. I am the mother whose son was molested by Aperon, and we need to do something. We need to protect our children. This cannot happen again. Not only with Aperon, but the other who were hiding behind the law. We need to protect them, our victims. I was molested as a child numerous times, and I couldn't say anything to anybody. I suffered over 60 years in silence, and I know what they're going through. And to think that I couldn't help my son when he was being molested by Aperon is, it just kills me. Because somehow I felt it was my fault. If I had known, I would have done something, but it was too late. So now I'm here in front of you to plead my case. Please, let's help our kids. Let's protect them. We cannot have these people do this to them. Back then, and I know that at one point in our life, we were molested, but we couldn't say anything. It's a dark, dark secret. But I'm here. We all know what we've gone through. We all know that we could talk about it. But we need to listen to our children. I didn't, because I was so into my own self that I, I wasn't listening. I mean, I was brought up thinking, "You can't talk about it. You can't, don't let the neighbors know." And then the people whom I trusted and I really cared for did this to me and told me that nobody would believe me. But, you know, even though it's been years for me, I am here to plead with you. And I know that you will find it in your heart to pass this bill because I know that if this happened to your children, you would be here on our end pleading your, the same thing we are. So please, we need to do this for our kids. We don't need another Sonny. My son looked at me and said, hours before he went to surgery, and he said, "Mama, I am so sorry. I was a bad boy. I tried to be good. I wanted to kill Aperon, and that just killed me, to hear that." He tried to burn the house down, the rectory where Aperon was staying. And he wanted to burn Aperon inside the house. But Aperon caught him, dragged him back in the house, and did what he, punished my son in the most horrific way. And then he called me up, and he said, "I had to punish Sonny because he was being naughty. He tried to burn me down. He kicked me in the groin." I couldn't understand why my son was, did all this. I thought he was just being the typical aguacar little boy. I left the island. I took my kids. I have three kids because I, I was lost. I didn't know what to do, what else to do. He didn't want to be a Catholic anymore. He told everybody he's Jewish, and I says, "Why'd you say you're Jewish?" Because, because they're not mean to their kids. They treasure their kids. They don't call them names. They don't do mean things to them. And little did I know, he became a drug addict. His life was miserable. And I still couldn't understand why until the day he passed away, hours he told me on his deathbed that Aperon molested him. We cannot allow this to go on. We need to help our kids. When Roy came, came through, I knew that it was Sonny's spirit who prompted Roy to come forward, and I knew that as a mother, I had to support the kids. I have to move forward to let everybody know that we cannot sweep it under the carpet anymore. We need to hear our kids. We need to listen because when we were growing up, we weren't allowed to talk about it. We all know that. At least I knew that. Even if I talked to my mom, she'd probably say, "Let's not talk about it. We don't want the neighbors to know. It's embarrassing." We want our kids to know that it's okay. It's okay for them to come forward and say, "He did it to me." These abusers hide behind this law. They know that they're being protected because of the two-year limit. What about the victims? What about Sonny? What about Walter? What about Roland and Roy? What about our kids? What about my grandkids? What's gonna happen to them if we don't pass this bill? Please, I beg you, for both, let's do something. We cannot have Aperon or any of these abusers hide behind the law. We need to let them know that it is okay. They are protected, and these abusers no longer have anything to back them. They cannot continue abusing our children. Like I said, I was abused, and after 60-plus years, I'm here sitting in front of you pleading this case. I am really grateful that this legislature is looking at these bills. If Aperon had helped these boys 40 years ago, my Sonny would still be alive. If Aperon had helped these boys 40 years ago, my Sonny would still be alive. But he didn't care about them. He didn't care about any of them. He only cared about himself. He only, he wanted to protect himself. He doesn't care what happens to them. Sonny has two kids and they don't have a father now. This morning, when I was getting ready, Sonny's two kids called me up and said, "Mom, do your best. I know you can do it. I know my dad's behind you. I know the guys are behind you. And I know that the legislature, the senators will hear you, Mom, plead your case, not only for them, but for us kids too, who have lost their dad." So I'm sitting here, "The police consider passing this bill." Because Aperon did this to my son. They lost their father and I blame Aperon for this. And I blame myself for not being able to help my son because I didn't know. I cooked for him. He asked my mom to make the thesis for him in Kellyginn and do all this other stuff because he wants to keep the boys overnight. And I trusted him. But he abused that trust. And now I'm without my son. He took advantage of my son and my kids. My grandkids are without their father now. He turned to drugs. He didn't want to live. He was just, he always, he died believing he was the devil's son because that's what Aperon told him. "You're no good. You're the devil's son and you never amount to anything." And he died unbelieving that he was not good for anybody. He took the abuse because that's what Aperon was good for, for these kids. He let them to believe that they're not worthy of anything. Aperon accused me of being a liar. If you pass this bill, I want to take Aperon to court. I have nothing to gain, but I want Aperon to be in court so that the truth can come out. I want to see. I want Aperon to look at me in the face and say, and look at these guys' faces and say, "You're all liars, really? I have issues with him. All of us do. But the one thing I can do, once you pass this bill, it'll give me a chance to take him to court. I want the world, I want our island people to know that we're not lying. I'm a mother. Why should I make up a story? My son is dead. I lost my son because of him. And he has the audacity to call me a liar? Your own mothers up there, fathers, you know what it's like. We're not supposed to bury our child. But I did and I don't even wish that in my worst enemy. And not only have I lost my son, with the guilt, it weighs so heavy because I literally fed my son to Aperon. I feel so guilty about it. And he's sitting high and mighty, thinking he's above the law. Well, guess what? Once this bill is passed, I can take him to court and see how high he can be. Because we all want to know the truth. And he can't fight the four of us. And I'm sure that there's more out there. That's all we want to hear. We want to hear him admit that, yes, he did wrong. So please, consider this bill, I beg of you. Because I know that if this happened to your children or your grandchildren, you would be right here to do the same thing. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much. Misconception. Ms. Bamba, please identify yourself for the record.
Hafa Daye Senators, my name is Charlene Santos Bamba and I am here to read my Uncle Roy Quintaniza's statement because he is not able to be here. Uncle Roy was ready to come and testify, but he discovered just last week that his younger brother, Peter, who has Down Syndrome and who has been under his custodial care for 21 years, was diagnosed with stage III cancer and requires immediate treatment. In addition, his older brother, Michael, is in a hospital in Honolulu and seriously ill. The following is my Uncle Roy's statement. Hafa Daye Senators, my name is Roy T. Quintaniza and I would like to testify in support and urge the passage of Bill Number 326-33. I was a victim of child sexual abuse and was abused when I was 12 years old and an altar boy by a priest that was respected throughout the community. He was my pastor, Father Tony Aperon. Father Aperon had planned to lure me into his house to sexually assault me. He went to my parents' home and asked their permission for me to sleep at the priest's house with the excuse that he needed my help at the church in the early morning. My parents gave their permission, believing that I would be safe. But instead, when the priest and I were alone in his house, he insisted that I sleep with him in his bed. And then he molested me. I was shocked, scared, hurt, alone and confused with no one to turn to. I didn't know what to do. I didn't tell my parents, my siblings or friends for fear that no one would believe And if I had said anything, that I would be criticized or punished and embarrassed for accusing a priest, our pastor, of sexual abuse. That thought terrified me enough to not say anything, so I tried my best to deal with it alone. I thought of suicide many times. Because the stress was as tremendous, was a tremendous weight on me, I felt sorry for myself. I lost my faith and trust in the very person that we all thought would be the last person to ever do such an egregious act to anyone, let alone a child. I told another priest at the same house months later, but nothing was done. So I remained silent, thinking I was the only victim. I carried the guilt and shame with me for 40 years until I came forward recently. It wasn't until I discovered by chance that other altar boys, friends of mine that I grew up with, happened to share stories of our past that included being sexually abused by the same priest. It was then that we decided to take the risk and confront the person that molested us. And we agreed to accept whatever the consequence would be for coming forward. I came forward because it was the right thing to do for myself, my friends, and especially because I feared that there might be others who were sexually abused by Father Anthony. Even after coming forward in my press conference on May 17th, Aperon, now Archbishop, continued to lie about it and hide behind the cloth and the church and claimed that our coming forward was an attempt to smear his name and divide the church and the faithful and calling us victims, liars. I made sure when I came forward that I was confronting the person, the pedophile, and not the church. Since May 17, 2016, when I submitted my statement to the Chancery, neither Archbishop Aperon, Apostolic Administrator Archbishop Han Taifan, or any representative from the Archdiocese has reached out to me for help or to help, to support or apologize or to reconcile. Instead, they have called me a liar. The Archbishop hides behind the church and said that I was trying to smear the church with lies. Their statements have never been retracted. This is evidence that Archbishop Aperon has no remorse for what he did to me and how he hides behind the church and as if I was trying to divide the church when instead it took everything I had in me to confront the person that committed such a deplorable act to me. No one, especially a child, should ever have to go through being sexually abused or be afraid to come forward and tell someone for fear that no one will believe them. Sexual abuse is a traumatic and horrifying experience for any adult, let alone a child. And when a perpetrator threatens a child if he or she tells anyone, is in itself evil and vicious. Any victim of sexual abuse knows that the experience is life-changing in the worst way. For many victims and myself, thoughts of suicide were often, they were common and numerous victims go through it. Sexual abuse robs societies, families, friends, communities of their loved ones. Lifting the statutes of limitations on child sexual abuse encourages and allows victims to come forward in hopes of finding closure and to find justice for their pain and suffering for a crime that caused them tremendous pain and suffering. It will also serve as a deterrent to potential predators by sending a serious message that our people take child sexual abuse very seriously and that harsh punishments are the consequences in store for all sexual predators. No child should ever be denied the opportunity to seek justice for a heinous crime based on statutes of limitations. Coming forward is not easy and only victims know when the time is right to come forward. Is it fair that I not be allowed closure or justice for what happened to me as a child? Is it fair that a sexual predator, a pedophile, be allowed to get away with molesting children because they are protected by the statutes of limitations? Please do the right thing and lift or abolish the statutes of limitations for child sexual abuse. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bamba. And please extend our appreciation for Mr. Quintaniza's submission of his testimony.
I will. Thank you.
Before I dismiss the panel, I'd like to continue with just a silent moment, especially in light of other victims out there who may have experienced similar horrendous situation. And then we'll proceed with opening up for questions from the senators and then continue As I open up the line of questioning to my colleagues, to all of you who have presented testimony this morning, I want to thank you very much for not only the courage and the bravery, but Mr. Denton, you mentioned something about inside or outside the Catholic Church and that applies directly to the proposed measure. There's absolutely no reason, no justification in this world for anyone to have to experience what you have all experienced. I thank you for your testimony this morning.
This has truly been some of the hardest testimony that I've had to sit through. And I want to say just on my behalf, I'm sorry that it took this long. I know all of you. I played baseball with Roland. And I thank you for your bravery. I want to thank you for letting us up here recognize and realize that there are things that need to get done, there are things that need to be done, and surely the things that are gonna be done, not just to give you peace of mind, but as Chairman said, what you went through, nobody should go through. I wasn't intending on speaking, but I just had to. Thank you very much. It's your strength that gave us, gave me the will and the determination to bring this Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Boss.
I don't have any questions, but I just want to say that I think you have made your positions known and you've stated your case real well and I certainly shall take heed. I guess it's the brave, the courage that you have all have demonstrated that causes many of us to draw that line in the sand and step forward and take a position. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator. Senator Torres? Senator Arissa?
Yes. I too would just like to thank all of you and others for being the voice for the victims and for those who have yet to have the courage. Because... the victims, and for those who have yet to have the courage, because this, what you've done, has actually caused not only the victims, but the parents that they hate. So I just want to really thank you for stepping up and being the voice for the other victims.
Thank you very much, Senator. Senator Tornada? Speaker?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I too would like to express my... Sorry. But I thank you. I thank you very much for coming forward. And you can rest assured that I support this bill 100% in the same way in which I had supported the original Bill 34-31, which came public law. It was unfortunate that it fell short of what it is. We wouldn't be here today had it passed in its original form to actually then not have a limitation. And I just want to make sure that, although I read the bill, and its intent is to make sure that additional language be placed, to make sure that it's, although it alludes to the fact that it would be retroactive, however, I think a language to make sure that it is stated so that it be retroactive, no matter when it occurred, whether it occurred in the 60s, or yesterday, that it would then by law be stronger, to make sure that that, you know, carries through. So thank you so much to you and anyone out there also, who, you know, may not feel yet as comfortable to come forward, that know that you do have our support as well. And I think I could almost speak for everyone here, that this bill then will actually pass. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Anna Speaker. Before I allow everyone in the panel to step aside, I want to, once again, thank you very much. Really thank you for coming out and sharing your story, because I'm sure that many other individuals who may have experienced similar situation, you laid the groundwork. It is because of you and your testimony and sharing your experiences that I anticipate that they will be able to step forward. And you know, this question about timeframe, no one should even question whether someone comes out 60 years later, or someone comes out 40 years later, regardless the act occurred. And the act was as horrendous as what you all presented and you all experienced. There's absolutely no reason why timeframe should even be considered. I think the sponsor, Senator Blass, alluded to it a little earlier. Sorry that we're only coming out now, to extend the support that you and other victims need. I want to also say that there's a lot of people behind each and every one of you, the victims. And I need to make this statement because there are other victims out there who would also like to come out, that your families have always been by your side in the last month and a half, and they will always be by your side. So if there are any other victims out there in the community that feel that it's going to be negative unlike 20, 30, 40 years ago, circumstances have changed, and the family will always be there to support. And I want to thank your families for being there for you and holding you up during this time of sharing your story. And Mr. Denton, you look like you want to provide additional comments before your dismiss?
No, I just wanted to thank everybody for, especially the support that we've all received throughout the whole island. Since I came out, it's, the people of Guam has been truly amazing, just in expressing their support. I mean, it didn't matter where I went, I had people coming up to me, just thanking me, and just showing their support, and hoping that something will get done. And the people of Guam, they are looking for a change. And I think this is where the change will start. This is the place, right here, right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Denton. Thank you, Mr. Sandia. Senator Torres?
[speaking Spanish]. And for those that, it took a lot to speak, because as you can see, we're all choked up here, but there's a phrase in Chamorro that God is not sleeping. But that doesn't mean that while we are here on earth, that we shouldn't do everything that we can to strengthen our laws and protect our families. And going forward here, I applaud you for your strength, because listening to you was, took an incredible act of strength. But speaking from your perspective, I just can't imagine myself being in that position. So we all know what we have to do. And thank you very much for the courage to be here and for sharing very intimate and heartbreaking testimony. Sisus Maasi.
Thank you, Senator Torres. Mr. Denton, Mr. Sandia, Ms. Conception, and Ms. Bamba, thank you very much for your testimonies this morning. At this time, the committee will continue with hearing testimony on Bill Number 326-33. If I can invite, please, the following individuals: Marissa Ugin, Margaret Tovis, Joseph Tayama, Mary Lou Garcia Paredo. Please, if I can invite the following individuals: Marissa Ugin, Margaret Tovis, Jose Tayama, and Mary Lou Garcia Paredo. Folks, if you signed in and you did not anticipate to provide oral testimony, then as I call your name, just signify, just let me know, okay?
Mr. Chairman, Marissa had to leave.
Okay.
She had a doctor's appointment, she was here, but she left.
Okay. Okay, I understand Marissa Ugin has left, so if I can invite the following, the additional individuals: John Paredo and Andrew Camacho?
I'm just here for support.
John Paredo, Andrew Camacho, and Manuel Conception. Like I said, ladies and gentlemen, if you're here primarily for support, I thank you for signing in, and just let me know. Okay, I take it the others are here specifically to provide support, so we'll continue to go down the list. Is Manuel Conception here?
Yes.
Are you going to provide testimony?
No.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Conception. Antonette Okada? I understand you're here for support? Okay. Likewise with Jose Okada? Okay, if we can start from my left, your right, and go towards your left. Please, if you can identify yourself for the record and proceed.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Senators. My name is Mary Lou Garcia Paredo. I'm currently a resident of Timuning, and I'm in favor of Bill 326-33 sponsored by Senator Frank F. Blass Jr. I submitted my testimony via email, and I'm here today to read my testimony into the It has been difficult for me to witness the recent revelations made by victims of child abuse from the 1970s. I cannot even begin to imagine how much they have suffered over the past four decades. As a mother, I am grateful that my own children were spared this trauma. As a grandmother, I pray that my grandchildren will never be subjected to sexual abuse. These days, we see and hear public service announcements made by children stating awareness of the ownership of their bodies and asserting that their bodies are off limits to others. But 40 years ago, children and pre-adolescents did not have the levels of assertiveness that is evident today. When they suffered sexual abuse at the hands of people they trusted, whether it was family, relatives, friends, or even priests, the victims did not readily reveal what happened to them. As a matter of fact, it has taken decades for these victims to speak out, at great emotional cost to them and their families. Unfortunately, perpetrators of sexual abuse against minors from four decades ago are able to escape criminal prosecution because the statute of limitations prevents victims from filing charges against them. And although the recent victims have stated that they had no interest in monetary compensation, I believe that an avenue should be provided for them to pursue civil litigation, should they decide to do so sometime in the future. By speaking about their experiences, the healing process has just begun for the victims. If they should decide to undergo therapy or counseling to assist them in the healing process, it can take a lot of time, and it can get very expensive. It seems appropriate to me that perpetrators who caused such trauma and suffering should be compelled to help right the wrong they have caused, regardless of how many years have passed since that traumatic event. As written, Bill 326-33 will remove the statute of limitations to allow victims of child sexual abuse that occurred on Guam to file civil claims in the Guam Superior Court. This is a bill that is long overdue, as many of you have already said. This is a bill that should be co-sponsored, so that it can be a bipartisan bill to help victims of child abuse. This is a bill that should be unanimously passed. I'm here to ask, on behalf of Walter Denton, Roland Sandia, Roy Conteniza, the late Sunny Canata, and other victims of child sexual abuse from decades past, please, please pass Bill 326-33 and open the door for these victims to pursue a civil lawsuit. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Sir?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, honorable senators. My name is John Vincent Garcia Paredo, and I'm providing testimony today in support of Bill 326-33, the Act to Amend Chapter 11, Title VII of the Guam Code Annotated, Relative to the Statute of Limitations in Child Sex Abuse Cases. Now, just as a disclaimer, I'm providing this testimony not as any expert, and thankfully not as a victim. I'm simply providing this testimony as someone who believes that justice should have no expiration date. To be fair, regarding crimes of sexual abuse, I do understand to an extent the need for a statute of limitations. However, I believe that special treatment must be given to cases of child sex abuse, since for a child to come forward about such a traumatic event is substantially more difficult than it is for an adult, and for them it may take years, even decades, to come forward, not to mention those who can't even come forward at all because of the extent of their trauma. Oftentimes, children subjected to sexual abuse will have to live the rest of their lives with the scars of physical and emotional violation. Those scars don't just magically go away after two years, so why should the accountability of the cretin who gave them those scars in the first place be allowed to magically go away after only two years? For many of these innocent youths who grow up, the specter of the event will never stop haunting them. So why should we allow the specter of justice to stop haunting their abuser after just two years? And for those predators, particularly those in positions of power within our respected institutions such as schools, and especially within our church, the ones who have no remorse for their actions and are able to just put it behind them, a luxury their victims will never have, to allow such abusers of power and innocence to be completely let off the hook simply because their victims weren't on time is, in my view, incompatible with the culture of justice. And it sends the very unfortunate implication that the greater your victim's trauma, the greater your chance of getting away with it scot-free because they weren't on time. This isn't the kind of message I want our laws to be sending, and I'm pretty sure you don't, this isn't the kind of message you want to send either. Then let this bill be your chance to make that resoundingly clear. I understand that this bill isn't an automatic fix-all for this issue. I don't think there ever will be an automatic fix-all for such an issue. And while nothing will ever truly erase the hurt that's been caused to these victims, at least this measure will provide some degree of recompense. Trauma has no expiration date, and neither should justice. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Paredo.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Senators. My name is Andrew Camacho, and I'm here to testify in favor of the bill to lift the statute of limitations. I'm part of the small group called Silent No More, working with Mr. Joseph A. Santos, who was off-island, and I was going to speak on his behalf, but he happens to be here. He arrived last night with a bunch of petitions that we have collected over the last several weeks. So I wrote this little testimony thinking that he would be off-island, but bear with me. My name is Andrew Camacho, and I am here in behalf of Mr. Joseph A. Santos, the founder of Silent No More. Silent No More is a community-wide effort to pass legislation to lift the statute of limitations on child sexual abuse. Although there was similar legislation passed and signed into law several years ago, it has since lapsed, and there is currently no recourse for victims of child sexual abuse who seek to confront their abuser, obtain some measure of justice, and continue the healing process to bring closure to a tragic part of their lives. Children who are sexually abused are often so traumatized that they can't speak about it to anyone. In some cases, they are only able to summon the courage to speak up after many decades. In other cases, the incident remains a secret for the rest of their lives. When this happens, the abuser is free to hurt other children, and more lives are affected. When the statute of limitations comes into play, the abuser gets off the hook. It is almost the perfect crime. Songs and slogans abound with a statement, "The children are the future." Although it is almost a cliche, there is a lot of truth to this statement. It is precisely because of this that we need to protect the future by creating laws and strengthening existing laws that protect children. When those close to children, when those children become adults, they need to have the law on their side. Abusers need to know they can't get away with their crimes. Thank you for your time and your efforts to help the children of Guam.
Thank you very much, Mr. Camacho, for your testimony. Mr. Titanow?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Gerald A. Titanow, a resident of Talampagul, Guam. I am in complete support of Bill Number 326-33, relative to removing the statute of limitation in cases involving child sex abuse. I ask each and every member of this legislature to support Bill Number 326-33 to eliminate the statute of limitation on child sexual abuse to protect children, help victims heal, and hold perpetrators accountable. A quick research into the effects of child sexual abuse shows that, one, for victims, the effect of child sexual abuse are devastating. I think we've had... I think we've had ample testimony of that today. Victims feel significant distress and display a wide range of symptoms, both short and long term. They feel powerless, ashamed, distrustful of others. The abuse disrupts victims' development and increase the likelihood that they will experience other sexual assaults in the future. In the short term, and that's up to two years, victims exhibit regressive behavior, such as thumb-sucking, bed-wetting in younger children, sleep disturbances, eating problems, behavior, performance problems at school, and unwillingness to participate in school or social activities. Longer-term effects are wide-ranging, to include anxiety-related, self-destructive behaviors such as alcoholism, drug abuse, anxiety attacks, insomnia, and I think a couple of times we heard about attempted suicide, or at least thoughts of suicide. Victims show fear and anxiety in response to people who share characteristics of the abuser, same-sex as the abuser, similar physical characteristics. Victims experience difficulties in adult relationships and adult sexual functioning. We've heard our witnesses say that they refrain from going to church, they refrain from even talking to priests after their incidents. Victims experience traumatic sexualization or the shaping of their sexuality in developmentally inappropriate and interpersonal dysfunctional ways. And I can go on and on, there are several other points, but we need to hold child sexual abusers accountable, regardless of when the victims are able to report. When a prosecutor cannot indict a child sexual offender for those types of heinous acts because of the statute of limitations has run, it raises serious moral, legal, and ethical questions. I urge in every, I urge each and every member of this legislature to eliminate the statute of limitations for all sexual abuse cases involving children. Giving sexual abuse victims the ability to seek justice against their abusers will allow for more victims to be hurt. I firmly believe that removing the statute of limitation on child sexual abuse cases would make children safer. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you very much, Mr. Taito. Senators, any questions for the panel members? Senator Blas? You're good. Thank you for your testimony again this morning. I will call the following individuals, and like I shared with you a little earlier, if by any chance you're not, you will not be providing oral testimony, just signify by letting me know. Senator Bob Klitsky, please, if you can join us up front. Rita Okihama. Priscilla Kitchito. If I call your name twice and you don't join the panel up front, then I will recognize that, in fact, you're here to provide support for the proposed legislation. Once again, Priscilla Kitchito, Rita Okihama, Rosa Santos, Cynthia Tolahi. Patricia Cepeda. Clotida Paredo. Joseph Santos. Gregory Perez. Charlene, I'm sorry, sorry, you already provided testimony. Once again, if I can just call the following individuals, and if you don't approach the table up front, then you'll be recognized that you're here primarily for support. Priscilla Kitchito, Rita Okihama, Rosa Santos, Cynthia Tolahi. Clotida Paredo, Joseph Santos is up front, Brittany Torres, Gregory Perez, and Lourdes Bamba. We do have one extra seat, so I'm going to work on filling that seat. Maria Ada. Joseph Portodo. Therese Babata. Jimmy Castro. Nettie Cruz. Margaret Mesgon. Ignacio Mesgon. Like I shared with everyone earlier, thank you very much for signing the sign-up sheet, because it does signify the presence of all of you in support of the proposed legislation or stating your position. Patricia Saho. Lucia Perez. Okay, so we do have a full panel. Senator Bob Klitsky, please, if you can identify yourself and proceed. Thank you for joining us this morning.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I'm Robert Klitsky. I'm testifying, I'm a lawyer, but I'm not representing anyone, I'm testifying in my own behalf. Mr. Chairman and honorable members of the committee, justice requires broadening the reach of this remedial legislation to provide relief to those who have suffered at the hand of child sexual abusers, to include not only the abusers, but also their enablers, aiders, or abetors, those acting in concert with them and their religious corporate, excuse me, religious institutions or corporations sole. The three Cs are referenced here: condemnation, cover-up, and conspiracy. Recent history tells us that the three Cs were all too prevalent in the worldwide Catholic Church. The institutional hierarchy of the Church condoned, cover-up, and conspired to prevent victims of child sexual abuse from attaining justice. When allegations of these heinous acts first surfaced on our island, my inclination was that whoever may have committed those acts should be made to pay, and that the institution, that is, the archdiocese of Corporation Soul, need not be held liable in order that justice be available to the victims whose claims had been barred by the running of the statute of limitations. If the statute of limitations on child sexual abuse were eliminated prospectively and reopened retroactively, the hierarchy and processes of the Church would be sufficient to clean up the Church so that child sexual abuse would become no more than a bad memory, I thought. I was wrong, very wrong. Scandal now saturates the Church, scandal so egregious that the Pope has sent an apostolic administrator, Archbishop Han, to take over the archdiocese in the stead of Anthony Apparon, who still retains the naked title of Archbishop. Han came here with tremendous potential to do good. Han came on the personal appointment of the Pope to clean up the mess that befalls our Church. Not only is Han on personal assignment from the Pope, but he holds the number-two position of that part of Vatican governance that has primary jurisdiction of the way bishops handle child sexual abuse amongst the clergy. Han wasted his opportunity. Han was greeted by Catholics who had high hopes for his success in cleaning up the mess, and he had the authority to start the cleanup. Han almost immediately dashed those hopes. Notwithstanding the command that with respect to child sexual abuse survivors, you saw four of them here, priority must not be given to any other kind of concern. But Han has figuratively, and in one case literally, turned his back on the survivors. Carrying the analogy a little farther, Han's minions have literally locked the door on survivors who would file claims dealing with their abuse at the hands of Apparon. Han hasn't even taken the time to learn all their names. While he holds nearly plenary power with respect to child abuse and to the survivors thereof, Han has done nothing but occasionally imply that survivors' complaints may be resolved against them in favor of Apparon. Han has not only retained key members of Apparon's corrupt regime, but enshrined them on committees that have little to do with the reason Han was sent here. Han maintains a social calendar and tolerates publications that serve to prop up the naked title of Apparon as though his return is imminent. Han allowed Apparon's dictatorial draconian order against faithful Catholics to actually take effect before he reluctantly rescinded it, at the same time rescinding another gag order on a Catholic who had blown the whistle on Apparon for purposely keeping diocesan child sexual abuse policy weak in order to protect himself. Han has demonstrated that if an end be put to child sexual misconduct, it won't be done by the Church hierarchy. It won't be done by the Church hierarchy, at least not while Han is involved. It must be accomplished by laymen, and by laymen I mean, see, people of both sects, I mean the laity. Given the proper tools, that is, an abatement of the statute of limitations and a clear statement that child sexual abusers, their enablers, aiders, or abetors, those acting in concert with them and their institutions or Corporation Soul, if not the entire hierarchy of the Catholic Church, can be held liable for child sexual abuse, we may be forever subjected to the Apparons and Hans of the Church. Were it not for the abysmal performance of the hierarchy of Rome, as evidenced by Archbishop Han, I would be urging you to adopt something like the following, and here it is, 20 GCA Section 2105 Subsection C. And this is, this is what I thought, you know, would have been appropriate. Let's go ahead and sue the abusers, let their own personal money or whatever respond, but not the institution, and this is what I thought we could do: civil immunity for Corporation Soul. Every Corporation Soul organized pursuant to 18 GCA Section 10102 shall be immune from civil liability for any act of sexual abuse committed by any officer, employee, agent, religious functionary, or volunteer of said Corporation Soul, giving rise to personal liability to said officer, employee, agent, religious functionary, or volunteer. In other words, the people would be liable, but not the Corporation Soul. That's what I thought. Han has shown me the wrongheadedness of that approach. Only a vigorous laity able to invoke the judicial power can be depended upon to root out and keep out child sexual abuse. The four people that you saw here today, you saw ads in newspapers. Have you seen any ads in newspapers since Han took over? How about the Umatunisijus? Wouldn't you think that, given the fact that we've seen the tip of the iceberg, that he would be out there looking for the rest of the iceberg, speaking in an allegory? A broadened Bill 326-33 is a good start toward providing justice to those who have been sexually abused by clergy, preventing such abuse in the future, and eliminating the possibility that abusers be protected by the three Cs. You heard Walter Denton talk about, you know, one of the Cs this morning. We can, I'll speak frankly here, we can thank Senator Frank Blas for introducing this bill, and Senator Frank Uggan for promptly setting it down for public hearing. In the name of justice and the protection of our children, I urge our senators to broaden this bill and pass it forthwith. Now, recognizing this hearing is a secular proceeding, I offer infra-selected, as you were, suggested language set out in secular terms. Submitting to child sexual abuse is an abomination wherever and whenever it may occur. And I've, I've shown an example of what a section of the law, 7 GCA Section 11301.1, could look like if it were to retroactively repeal the statute of limitations, and B, would prospectively do the same thing, making it clear that the statute would be repealed, as you were, not applicable to the enablers, aiders, abetors, conspirators, whatever. It is very important to take note that the failure of Public Law 3107 to be effective in allowing survivors of sexual, as you were, sexual, child sexual abuse to seek, to seek justice. In other words, as well-intended as it may have been when it was introduced, as it was passed, there were several things that, for all practical purposes, would allow me to say that the window was never really open, and I've listed some of those things, a little bit on the technical side, so bear with me, if you will. We start out with 7 GCA 1106.1G, which says, "If the court finds that there has been failure to comply with a section, the court shall award a party, et cetera, any reasonable expenses incurred by the defendant," et cetera. The word term "reasonable expenses" is unknown, as far as I know, but if you, if you are someone who wants to come forward and file a forty-year-old claim, you wonder what reasonable expenses means. 7 GCA 1106.1D, "A violation of this section shall constitute unprofessional conduct, and shall be grounds for the discipline against the attorney." When lawyers file suit, they already know that if they file a frivolous claim, they're going to be disciplined according to the rules of civil procedure, Rule 11, the Guam Bar Association, et cetera. But to have a statute come right out and say that if you bring this claim, and for some reason it doesn't work out, you're going to be disciplined, chilling effect, crap for the unwary. "The chilling effect of the provisions such as those set out, Oprah, was apparently sufficient to dissuade counsel from bringing actions for child sexual abuse, no matter how meritorious the claim." In other words, although one section of the law claimed to open the window as a practical matter, there were so much, there was so much negative incentive included in the other provisions of the law, which I've laid out here in my testimony, and I don't think we need to spend a lot of time reading them, but as an example, 7 GCA 1106C is still the law, and 306C was obviously put in place to make it more difficult to file claims for child sexual abuse that had been time-barred, but the language of C applies to all Section 11306 claims, lest Attorney's Fees and Damages provision applies to claims for assault, battery, false imprisonment, et cetera. But even, but it applies to claims for sexual occur, excuse me, sexual acute, sexual abuse, child sexual abuse that would have occurred today. That section, 110306C, is still the law. So even if yesterday Apparon had committed the alleged rape of a child, as reported on TV and in the papers, Section 11306 would still apply. Certainly, a negative incentive- Certainly a negative incentive for anyone coming forward, and we've heard plenty of negatives incentives already. So it's very important, I think, that the legislature takes a look at those sections, considers some of the other things that I've mentioned in my testimony here, because I think it has to be clear that what happened where the prior law is really didn't open the window. It apparently opened the window, but no one came forward because of the negative incentives. Now, here is one case where legislative intent is really important. I sometimes have taken a jaundiced view of legislative intent, considering them sort of an institutionalized press release about the bill, but here it's very important. It's very important that the legislature, in its intent, pick up some of the things that I put in my testimony to show that we're not doing it again, that if you decide to do it, in a sense, you're doing it for the first time. I provided some other suggested language here that you may or may not want to consider, just as an aid to the legislative process, but I think the really important thing that I would urge on you is the policy considerations, that if cover-ups, conspiracies, et cetera, have occurred, we need to find out, and the only way that's going to happen is if you open up the statute of limitations in the past, not only for the abusers, but for the conspirators, the aiders, the abetters, the betters, and the institution itself. And the only way to provide a deterrent effect in the future, so that we don't have to deal with this in the future, is to extend that same thinking forward, so that every single Catholic on the island, I should say every single person on the island, because as has been pointed out, this is not just a Catholic phenomenon, that everybody knows that if there is child sexual abuse, you have a responsibility not to just forget about it or say, "Well, I don't want to get involved," or "I don't want to be embarrassed." You need to come forward, and if you are in a church like the Catholic Church, if you don't, the consequences could be extremely severe. So, the end of my testimony, I submit this testimony with a humble prayer that this august body take steps necessary to provide tools to the laity to root out child sexual abuse in the three Cs, wherever it may exist. Santé parisi, Senator Camacho, Debrita, Portheji, i famo gonta, si duos massi. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Klitschke, for your testimony this morning.
My name is Lucia Rages-Perez. I was raised in a Catholic faith, and I am still a practicing Catholic. My grandfather was known as the oldest altar boy in Aggett. I sit before you this morning to verbally express support for Bill Number 326-33 relative to the statute of limitations in cases involving child sexual abuse. In fact, I think we should follow what Maine did in Title 14 Subsection 752C, where civil or criminal actions may be brought out at any time. When the issue of child abuse by a clergy to minors was first raised, I sat in the background listening and observing how the community chose to deal with the topic. As names were put to faces, faces to stories, stories to shattered life, I thought, where did we go wrong as a community? How did we allow this to happen to us? The truth is, we did not cause the harm that was inflicted on the victims. The victims did not instigate it. The victims did not ask for it. The victims did not do anything wrong. Any sexual contact, whether it be overt or not, between a child and someone the child trusts damages a child in countless ways. Both boys and girls can be victims of child sexual abuse. It is unfortunate that the crimes of child sexual abuse are underreported. Statistics will show that 93% of juvenile sexual assault victims know their attacker, and often it is someone in their family, in their clergy, or that circle of trust. There are many reasons that a child may not report sexual abuse. To question a victim as to why they are just coming out to speak about the event is not What is valid is the reasons why the child did not report it, such as, "The victims don't know sexual abuse, isn't normal?" Maybe the victims did not realize there is help. They're afraid of the consequences of making their attackers known. No one will believe them. They're afraid how others will resent them, and they are threatened by the abuser. Believe me when I say that these reasons are not excuses, they are reality. It is just not the boys of Aggett, but there are female victims out there. Because of these reasons, there should be no statute of limitation. As a community, we should foster and nourish avenues to help our victims recover. Abusers will use their position of power over their victims to coerce or intimidate the child. Child sexual abuse is not only a physical violation, it is a violation of trust and authority. Today, as you listen to us, tomorrow, when you ponder on this, and when it comes time to voting, please use the power that was given to you to stand up for the victims and send a message to the abusers that we will no longer allow them to hurt another child. With this power, there is a voice that cannot and will not be stifled. Again, my name is Lucia Rages-Perez. I was raised in Aggett, I went to Catholic schools, I'm a practicing Catholic. Abusers should not be given the opportunity to hide. Victims should be supported, assisted, and allowed to recover in the manner that is correct, not in shame, and not behind closed doors. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Perez, for your testimony this morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Honorable Senators. My name is Joseph A. Santos, and I apologize if I ramble a little bit. I don't do this for a living as Senator Klitschke does. It's not much of a living. I am here in support of Bill Number 326-33, with all the amendments that Senator Klitschke threw at you as well. I started a movement called Silent No More. As I started learning more about the laws of Guam, I didn't realize how the laws favor the perpetrators of crimes, how the laws protect the abusers. A friend of mine even said, "The Constitution was built and written to protect the criminals." I looked at that, and as I read the statute of limitations on child sexual abuse, I kind of realized, even then, especially with the poison pills that were set in place when that first bill was passed. What I'm here to ask you is that everybody else that has been talking here pushed this measure through. You are either against child sex abuse, or you're for it. If you vote for the bill, we know where you stand. If you abstain, we know where you stand, and the governor should sign it as fast as he can, because, and I'm going to have to use the Healing Hearts statistics that I can remember, I'm over 60, so pardon me if I miss one. 2013, there were 153 rapes reported by the Healing Hearts. 2014, there were 111. 2015, there were 111. A majority of those rapes were against minors, primarily girls. So this bill is more than just about one person, it's about our community, and those are just the reported rapes. There were so many more that are out there because of, what Ms. Perez said, family members, there's a reluctance to report, and so, again, as part of the movement of Silent No More, I ask you, on behalf of all the victims, of these child sex abuse victims, to please pass this bill. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Santos. Mr. Perez?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, and members of this committee. My name is Gregory D. Perez, the president of Tamooning, and I'm here in my personal capacity in support of this bill. I'm also here as the president of Concerned Catholics of Guam, who unanimously voted to support this bill. Our testimony is as follows. The bill is an excellent bill, and on behalf of our organization, I would like to publicly thank the sponsor, Senator Frank Blas Jr., for introducing this bill in response to a festering problem in light of recent news accounts of child sex abuse that has occurred decades ago within the Archdiocese of Ganya. Thank you sincerely, Senator Blas. The bottom line is this: The bill gives victims of child sexual abuse by adults an opportunity to seek justice for heinous criminal acts that have scarred them forever. Section 1 of the bill, Legislative Findings and Intent, states clearly that the children who are abused, in quotes, "need many years to overcome the pain of their abuse and time to obtain the courage needed to speak out about the abuse that they have suffered." This is so true. However, currently, there is a disconnect between the current two-year statute of limitations to report such a crime and avail oneself of legal remedies through the criminal justice system in the period of time the victims who are below the age of consent need in order to come forward to tell about the painful experiences they have suppressed for years and even decades to finally seek justice. This bill removes that obstacle and shows compassion and support for the victims, giving them time to heal and to prepare themselves to confront their perpetrator in a court of law, should they seek restitution for crimes committed against them when they were just children. As adults, they are mature enough to talk about the abuse they experienced and can think more clearly in pursuing justice. They can also deal with the doubters who choose to mock or ridicule them. As we have read in the news recently, and with one account more than a year ago, the Archbishop of the Archdiocese of Ganya has been accused of alleged child sexual abuse of young altar boys in the parish of Mount Carmel in Aggett in the '70s, when he was a pastor there. Though these brave, courageous, and inspiring men and the resilient mother of one of the abused victims who has since passed away have come forth publicly on the surface, that is all they can do at this point in time because the statute of limitations for child sexual abuse crimes, where is the justice in this, Mr. Chairman? The bill, if and when it becomes law, will motivate other child sex abuse victims to come forth. In the Gospel of Matthew, Jesus Christ told his apostles that, "To be great in heaven one must humble himself like the little children around him." But on the dark side of his advice was the strong admonition in Chapter 18, verse 6, where he said, in quotes, "If anyone causes one of these little ones who believe in me to sin, it would be better for him to have a large millstone hung around his neck and to be drowned in the depth of the sea," unquote. These are very powerful words, but they do state the gravity of our responsibility towards our children, who have no one to trust other than those around them who are supposed to nurture them into childhood. As a community, Mr. Chairman, we cannot allow such perverted acts by these child sex abusers to go unpunished, simply because the abused child has been traumatized into years and decades of silence, and when they finally come forth with their stories, it is too late for them to do anything with only a two-year window to file a civil lawsuit against their abusers, which has long passed. The abuser is free to pray again on the scales of justice, because of this two-year statute of limitations seem to tip in favor of these criminals. The passage of this bill and its enactment into law will return the scales of justice to its proper balance. Mr. Chairman and members of the committee, please act swiftly on this measure so that these victims will have their day in court and that we, as a community, are genuinely in support of victims' rights. Thank you for this opportunity to address the committee on this important piece of legislation.
Thank you very much, Mr. Perez, for your testimony this afternoon. Senators, any questions? Senator Klitschke, you had another comment?
Sure. I just wanted to make sure, sir, with regards to the testimony that we can continue to work with you, the language that you have...
Say again.
The language that you have...
Yes.
The committee, we'll be able to work with you...
Certainly, I'd be more than happy to work with the committee on that, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Senator Blas. Any questions for the panel members? Madam Speaker?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Perez, in your testimony, you've indicated that, in your research, that Maine and its statute does not only have criminal action, I mean, civil actions, but to include criminal actions. Is that something that you're testifying that this committee consider?
We should, yes, ma'am, we should consider it, because as stated, it basically puts it at any time it could be brought up. So removing it and then making sure that the victims have an area to go back to, so it no longer just protects the abusers, but the victims are taken into consideration.
Thank you. Mr. Klitschke, I'm going to ask you, as an attorney then, that if you read Page 2, Section 2, where it says, "An action for assault," that's when the limitations remove, "an action for assault, battery, false imprisonment, seduction of a person below the age of legal consent," would that language be sufficient? I mean, I understand the limitations for seduction of a person, however, on the other parts, other actions such as assault, battery, and false imprisonment, would that then lift the statute of limitations for other crimes other than sexual abuse?
Madam Speaker, unfortunately, I couldn't listen...
However, on the other parts, other actions, such as assault, battery, and false imprisonment, would that then lift the statute of limitations for other crimes other than sexual abuse?
Madam Speaker, unfortunately, I couldn't listen as fast as you were talking.
Sorry. Okay, I'll repeat it then.
And I didn't have the bill in front of me. Ms. Perez has given me the bill, so could I have a do-over?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's on Page 2, Line 22...
Okay.
...on the limitations, but 23 says that the limitations will be removed for any action for assault, battery, false imprisonment. Would that lift any other crimes that is an assault or a battery, but nothing necessarily related to sexual abuse?
Okay, so you're looking at Line 22...
Which is the limitations, lifting the limitations.
Okay, Line 22 is an amendment...
Yes.
...of Section 7GCA, Section 1106. And it starts out by amending the first line, which in this particular case is not a title, but it's an operative part of the statute. So by saying limitations removed, it does in fact remove the statute of limitations on assault, battery, false imprisonment, seduction of a person, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Yes?
So my question then is that if this bill is to address sexual abuse, will we then, by lifting this particular section in 11306, actually be lifting the limitation as well for assault, battery, and false imprisonment?
Possibly. And that is exactly why I suggested... Why I suggested enacting a new Section 11301.1, A and B, and then you could go back to 11306 and limit it to its original purpose. Okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Any other questions for the panel, senators? If not, thank you very much for your testimony this morning. Thank you.
It's pretty easy, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Okay, I'm going to continue to proceed down the list and...
Wait, can I, I'm sorry, can I...
Madam Speaker?
Senator Klitsky, can you come right back, please?
Senator Klitsky, please.
Well...
Oh, you mentioned...
Okay, in your testimony, that's true, I forgot to ask you about this, that if the statute of limitations on Page 1 of your testimony paragraph, second paragraph, if the statute of limitations on child sex abuse were eliminated prospectively and reopened retroactively, because most of the laws that we pass are always prospectively, rarely retroactively. So then, earlier in my statement was that we want to make sure that it is very clear that in this case, that we are making it retroactively and not necessarily prospectively.
Retroactively, to handle the old claims, such as the ones we heard today. Prospectively, and of course statutes of limitations always extend prospectively. Perhaps my language wasn't as clear as I would have liked, but I meant prospectively without limitation. That's what I meant. And then also including what you could call the derivative torts to the child sexual abuse, the conspiracy, the cover-up, and all the rest of that. Okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you again, Senator Klitsky. I will proceed and call the following individuals, and if by any chance you're going to provide oral testimony, please join us up front. Pierre Terrevey, Bruce Williams, Jessa Williams, Dolores Camacho, Lou Klitsky, Jordine Titanu, Ziebler, Solidat Chaglov, thank you, Ben Torres, Mark Muffness. Once again, with the exception of those who have signified that they're here for support, Pierre Terrevey, Bruce Williams, Jessa Williams, Dolores Camacho, Lou Klitsky up front, Jordine Titanu, Ziebler, mentioned you're here for support, Solidat Chaglov, Ben Torres, Mark Muffness, and just so that we can continue to fill the seats, Mr. Fred Leon Guero, Michelle Casemiro, Tupaz, Megan Blas, thank you, Ms. Hernandez, Patty, Jonathan Diaz. Jonathan, we'll call you up in the next panel, okay? Thank you very much for joining us this afternoon. And if we can start with Ms. Klitsky, please, just identify yourself for the record and proceed with your testimony.
Good morning, Honorable Chairman, Senator Frank Augen, and members of the committee. My name is Lou Klitsky, Professor Emeritus of Special Education, University of Guam, and a contributing member of charitable, religious, and professional organizations. As a teacher, mother, grandmother, and great-grandmother, I speak before you today with a very heavy heart in support of Bill 326-33. When I hear of Roy Kintanija, Mrs. Concepcion, Walter Denton, and Roland Sandias' testimonies of those horrific nights they were molested when they were altar boys at the Mount Carmel Catholic School, Catholic Church in Aggett in the 1970s, my heart cries out with them. Just imagine to stand in front of several reporters and cameras glaring at you as you relive the nightmares of pain, torture, suffering, fear, embarrassment, and humiliation. Each one of these victims experienced an unfathomable ordeal that would haunt them throughout their lives. Roy cried all night, long after the sexual molestation, and felt trapped inside the rectory. Up to now, he continues to cry for his pain, suffering, and betrayal. For Mrs. Concepcion to hear her son's last words on his deathbed before being wheeled into surgery. "Mom, Father Aperon molested me when I was an altar boy in Aggett." No sooner than Mrs. Concepcion could blurt out the words, "Did he rape you?" The elevator door closed. How traumatic is that for a mother to hear from her son's years of suppressed physical, emotional, and mental pain and suffering? You can imagine the feelings Mrs. Concepcion endures. She continues to grieve. For Walter Denton, 12, who was raped that evening of April 1977, was devastating. His dream of becoming a priest was shattered that evening by a man Walter trusted, looked up to, and emulated him in following the teachings of the church and life of Christ. How sad. For Roland Sandias, 15, was also sexually molested by then-Father Tony Aperon, also suffered mental anguish, pain, shock, and humiliation. As a mother and grandmother, I shudder to think of my own encountering these evil acts. I applaud this man and Doris for coming forward, for their bravery and courage to tell the truth. One does not forget the pain and hurt. I commend Senator Blas for introducing the bill, and Senator Augen for calling this hearing, so that justice can be finally provided to the survivors. I plead with you senators to please, please, pass this bill to lift the statute of limitation for child sexual abuse. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Klitsky, for your testimony.
Good morning. My name is Ben Torres, and I'm here today to read the testimony of Joe R. San Augustin. Mr. Chairman and members of the Committee on Guam, U.S. Military Relocation, Public Safety, and Judiciary, my personal greetings to each of you individually, and I extend to you all one big Hava Day, and buenas. That's coming from Joe San Augustin. My name is Joe R. San Augustin, a resident of Totu, Guam. I apologize that I am having my testimony on Bill 326-33 read to you by a designated third party due to a physical hardship on my part to personally appear before you. I can be personally contacted, however, to the information provided below, should that be necessary. My testimony will be very brief. As one being in favor of this bill, I am hopeful that the Rules Committee will expeditiously act following this hearing and bring Bill 326 to the floor for consideration by the whole body of our elected officials for further consideration and/or debate, either as a writer or through its own merit, and I pray for its favorable passage. My favorable testimony for Bill 326 lies in the fact that I believe it is the right thing to do, notwithstanding the existence of statutes of limitation for other crimes, sexual or otherwise. I believe that crimes against minors should have no limitation of time to expose assault made against them and to seek closure to their traumatic experience, if only for the simple argument that they were not only below the age of legal consent at that time, but that the trauma and experience they underwent were something that they perhaps were not able to fully comprehend and cope with at that time, and may take years or decades before it finally dawned on them that they should be silent no more. Thus, when they do overcome their emotional and other issues, they should be given the opportunity of redress and not be forever penalized for ever bringing closure to their issues because of a law, a statute of limitation, that further penalizes them. I believe the law should give those minors, then, the opportunity to bring healing to themselves as adults. I applaud Senator Frank Blas Jr. for the righteous action he took in introducing this bill. It is my hope that other senators, we're addressing all of you here present this morning, that the other senators will follow suit and attach their names on the bill as co-sponsors before it hits the floor for further consideration and action. Thank you for the privilege of presenting my thoughts on this bill, and for the opportunity to give you my testimony in absentia, today's date, June 27, 2016. Respectfully, Joe R. San Augustin, a resident of Totu. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Torres, and please extend our appreciation to Mr. San Augustin for his testimony. Mr. Williams?
First of all, I wanted to, I didn't plan to give a testimony today, but sitting here in these chambers, I was reminded of my former brother-in-law, Senator Van Gelenen, and the work that he did. And what I wanted to simply say, because everything, I believe, has already been said, so I'd like to thank you, honorable senators, chairperson, for what you're doing. I think it is really unfortunate that this is something that we have to do, because it should already be common sense, that there should be no limitation on this kind of crime. But we're moving forward, and I'd like to thank all of you. And I really applaud the victims who have come forward, because it has been said many times, this is not something that's not very easy to do, because your conscience haunts you. So please move forward with this bill as quickly as we can, because it is something that this community needs to heal. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Williams, for your testimony.
Hava Day, senators, my name is Patty Vabata Portodo Hernandez. I'm here with my family in support of Bill Number 326-33 to reopen the statute of limitation. I hope you senators that are here listening to these testimonies are in support of this bill, 326-33. It's not easy for these victims to come out forward telling the whole world the stories that happened behind closed doors. It hurt, it scarred them for life, especially if it's your family member who was molested. It does not matter if you're a governor, president, senator, priest, or Archbishop of that matter. It's sinful, it's wrong, and it needs to stop. And U.S. senators are the ones that can help and make this happen. Please pass Bill 326-33, Sejuas Maasi.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hernandez. Thank you for your testimony this afternoon. Senators, any questions for the panel? And I thank you again. Continuing down the list for all those who have signed up, and please signify if it's not identified in the signing sheet, signify if in fact you're here as support and not necessarily for oral testimony. If I can invite the following individuals: Jonathan Diaz, John Wustig, Joseph Carville, thank you for signing in, Maria Wustig, John Kinata, Jose Rosario, Patricia Perry, Viola Salas, Candace, Annie Opinco, Jane Moore, Maria Espinoza, Carolyn Zieber, Susan Dugan, David Blas, and John Junior Carville. Once again, if by any chance I mention your name, please, you're invited to join us up front if you're going to be providing oral testimony. If not, then thank you very much for signing in and signifying your position on the proposed measure. Jonathan Diaz, John Wustig, Joseph Carville, Maria Wustig, John Kinata, Jose Rosario, Patricia Perry, Viola Salas, Candace, Annie Opinco, Jane Moore, Maria Espinoza, Carolyn Zieber, Susan Dugan, David Blas, and John Junior Carville. I take it that you're all here to extend your position on the proposed measure, so thank you very much again for signing in. Mr. Jonathan Diaz, if you can identify yourself for the record and proceed with your testimony.
Senator Sejuas Maasi, Chairman Augen, Senator Torres, Senator Ada, Senator Blas, Senator Ada, Madam Speaker. My name is Jonathan Frank Blas Diaz, and before I begin this testimony, oral testimony, I'd like to ask the chairman of this committee to please, in your committee report, to ensure that the testimonies that you heard today are written verbatim. I noticed that several of the victims have come forward, they were prepared with a statement, but they also added things to their testimony, and I'd like to ask the chairman if he can promise me that...
Mr. Diaz, my committee report is reflective of the statements coming directly from those who provide testimony, and so there's no need for that particular request. That's the standard in terms of the committee's report. So that particular request to all those who have provided testimony, just acknowledging that your oral presentation will be inclusive in the committee report, and if there's any deviation from your written testimony, then that would also be a... deviation from your written testimony, then that would also be attached to the committee report.
Okay. Thank you so much, Chairman. In the 2011 first regular session, Bill Number 34-31 core, sponsored by B. J. F. Cruz, an act to amend subsection 11306 of Article III, Chapter 11, Title VII of the Guam Code Annotated, relative to the statutes of limitations for civil actions involving child sexual abuse. This bill passed. And for the record, I would like to present to this committee and to this legislature in the 2011 first regular session, you had nine yays and six nays. Please allow me to say who these senators are so that we gain clarity as to the statutes of limitations that are currently being debated. Senator Thomas Ada, C. Ada, yes. V. Anthony Ada, no. Frank F. Blas Jr., no. Benjamin J. F. Cruz, yes.
Mr. Diaz, with all due respect, that is public law 34-31, and I'm going to — because it's a different measure that is being entertained, it has components of it that is different from the public law today.
I understand that, Senator.
Mr. Diaz, I'm going to use the prerogative of the chair because the decision of senators at that time may have changed by virtue of how this provision is written.
I understand that, Senator, but I am also a victim and survivor of Catholic clergy sexual abuse on the Archdiocese of Agania.
I'm just going to request that, in fact, there's no need to mention this, Mr. Diaz, because that is already written in the record books of the Guam Legislature. So if anyone would like to see the voting record of any of the senators in that previous legislature, then by all means, that can be accessed through the Guam Legislature webpage.
Okay, thank you so much for that clarification. Just one more caveat concerning this bill, Senator, is that under the bill's pass, the section under the guamlegislature.com page as passed is not working at this moment.
Thank you.
Okay. So I want to preface this that I am the first survivor of Catholic clergy sexual abuse to come forward. And at that time, I sat here and I testified that I was molested in 1991 by a priest. At that time, he was an older seminarian. He is still a priest today. In the summer of 1991, I was preparing to enter Father Duena's Minor Seminary. And at that time, there were seminarians who came home for the summer. They were at St. Joseph's College in Mountain View, California. And at that time, I was taken to San Vicente Church, methodically brought in. The priest was out, everybody was out, playing volleyball on the side of the church, and this older seminarian, now priest, basically took advantage of me. I was only 13 years old. Then, when I was in the high school seminary at Father Duena's Minor Seminary, I was the last of the Mohicans, so to speak. And at that time, he was assigned to San Vicente Catholic Church as well, under his pastoral assignment, which is about four years into the Theologit, which is your master's degree program. And at that time, I was again taken advantage of by this person. I want to tell you a story because it helps to paint a picture that the current bill that you are presenting to me revictimizes me because I stood in front of all of you at that time. This is the reason why this bill is important because now you believe the boy who cried woof. I have been insulted by this community. I have been revictimized over and over again. It is not just one person that has propositioned me for sex in a Catholic church on Guam, but by several priests. And at that time, the media asked me for an interview, and they neglected to state that I said, "Please go and see Archbishop Apparone." They neglected to put that in. So let me backtrack this because it helps to paint the picture as to how my feelings are and the kind of frustration that has overwhelmed my psyche. As all of you know, in 2008, I left my job at Sacred Heart Catholic School, Preparatory School in Atherton, California. This is the school that Governor Eddie Baza-Cavil graduated from. I was a campus minister, making over $60,000 a year. I received an anonymous phone call from Guam saying that another boy has been molested by the same person who I tried my best to get out of the church. You are scandalous, scandalous! I was also the first seminarian that they tried to enforce the neocatacuminal way spirituality on me. They denied me to go to St. Patrick's Seminary even though I was absolutely accepted into that major seminary. So I've been fighting this for a very long time. Nobody believed Jonathan Diaz. No senators came to my help. I went to the lawyers. Nobody wanted to help me. The attorney that's representing these fine individuals have come forward. I'm still waiting for his phone call back. And the only one that stepped forward to try to assist me, she got this bark. You want to talk about the pain and the suffering that I have had to deal with? Being ostracized from this community? Running away? What do I do? What do I do, Jonathan? Do I stay or do I go? I left. I went and pursued my academic studies. I became the Director of Recruitment Admissions for the Franciscan School of Theology. I have a Master's in Systematic and Philosophical Theology from the Graduate Theological Union and the Franciscan School of Community. Franciscan School of Theology, excuse me. I applied to come back to Guam, but at that time, the Vice President of the University of Guam, the late Deacon Barcinus, did not allow me a job as the Dean and Director of Enrollment Management and Student Services. I have vigorously tried my best to come back to Guam to serve my people. I went to the Attorney General's office. At that time, it was under Michelle Lintiaco. They allowed me to meet with Attorney General, Assistant Attorney General Basil Malin, who then assigns Archbishop Apparone's niece to be the investigator in the room. Prior to coming to Guam in 2008, I had written an email to the Archbishop requesting and demanding several things that need to be changed within the Archdiocese of Agania. I was called mentally ill because I am a bisexual man. Why bisexual? Because I was molested when I was seven years old by an older cousin, and I was also molested again when I was 13 years old, and molested again when I was over the age of 16. I tried my best to do it on my own, ran for politics because my family's name was being trashed, blacklisted by the church that I love so much. Nobody came to help me. So I ran against Yorgadzu, Madeline Burdazu, whose campaign sign now stands in front of the Public Defender's Office. Illegality because we're just renting from that place, just like we're renting from this legislature. I have tried to whistleblow so many different times about this government and the illegalities of this government, and I asked Speaker Wampat to please investigate an ethics report and a resolution, please, about what Vice Speaker Cruz had confided to the news media concerning the Archbishop's involvement during that particular legislative session. It is important for the people of Guam to know who were these senators involved in changing this statutes of limitations because now such a slap in our face. Then in 2010, I ran as a senator. Remember, my mom is a Democrat and my father is a Republican. So I ran again, didn't win. Why? Because I want to serve my people. Because my people donated Catholic charities appeal for my education. I have never forgotten that. So then in 2012, I broke away from you guys. I broke away from the Democrats because I needed to honor my father this time. So I ran as an independent. I don't know how many times I've convened — probably I've convened more legislatures than the governor himself. And at that time, I was working at the University of Guam and Dr. McNich, and the Republican Party went after me. $10.20 an hour was called an idiot, was called so many things by both parties of Guam when all I wanted to do was right the wrongs of the past, the injustices that the Chamoros people have suffered enough. And yet, we sit back and say, "Oh, let's cut and paste this law from Hawaii or California. We think we're a state." Then, obviously, 2014, I tried to run as a Republican, and your office, your Republican Party, denied me. Your governor treated me like a little kid, revictimized me. Remember when I was standing in front of Adalup and protesting and holding up the Guam flag? Do you remember that, senators? I was protesting so that this does not go through because you manipulated the entire two years of statutes of limitation without giving teeth so that we could go after our So last year, I came forward in my blog as to who was my perpetrator, and still nothing. Was taken by some people, sent other blogs' fears, and made fun of because I said that the Archbishop might be innocent. Do we believe in democracy, that we are innocent until proven guilty? So what did I do? After 2012, I decided to go and get my PhD. So I am a PhD, all but dissertation, in public policy and social change with a specialization in Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Studies. And I want to be very clear about my position that I am not running for any public office because I'm standing up for victims. I'm doing this because I knew that these victims existed and you didn't listen. I was trying to prepare our community for this kind of explosion, and nobody believed Jonathan Diaz. So what is there to do? I am stuck again because if I say yes to your bill, I'm covering up for your no. If I say no to this bill, then I'm calling these guys a liar. That's not my intention. My intention is that my abuser was also abused by other individuals, and we must target the cycle of abuse. Perhaps, and I don't know, I'm not here to defend the Archbishop, but could it be possible that even Archbishop was molested when he was a kid? So the Pope, Pope Francis, has come out very strong and indicated that the church does not have any statutes of limitations. You can find that on all news media. You can find that information out if you are afraid because of the votes that may be attached to this kind of thing, which senators are always going crazy for. But I'm not here to pander votes. I don't need recognition for what I've done, but I cannot, in good conscience, say yes or no to this bill because I've already did it. I opened up the statutes of limitations on Guam. Jonathan Diaz did that for these victims. So don't play God when you're in legislative session, but I want to know, who are those senators that were wheeling and dealing behind closed doors with institutions on this island? We have no place. Guam deserves better, senators. I'm unemployed right now. I don't have a job. Last year, I only made $32,000. The amount of money that I'm making as a teacher cannot pay and sustain me on this Look at the injustices, senators. They're all around you. I am a Chamoros teacher, I'm proud of it. But look at the museum. When you stand in front on the right-hand side, you'll see the derogatory because they forgot the lonet, the lonet ah. So those things need to be corrected, just like these things need to be aired out so that we know who are the ones that are on the side of the people and who are not on the side of the people. Is my intention to take the church to court? No. It has never been about that. Why would I sue the hand that feeds me? But even at that, a good old Archbishop sent out a memo... But even at that, a good old Archbishop sent out a memo to all Catholic schoolteachers, principals, do not hire Jonathan Diaz. Because I'm a radical? Because I'm a liberal? Because I am a Franciscan? And it hurts. But I stand in front of you as a witness that these things need to change. The double-dippers, the triple-dippers, all of that, need to change, senators. And we need to make, ensure that both parties are held responsible for these decisions that ultimately affect the mental illness of our people. And if we're not targeting the cycle of abuse, then what are we waiting for? Are we waiting for something else to push us, to say yes or no, or abstain? It takes a lot of courage to come forward publicly, testify here at the legislature. I'm wearing the same shirt that I testified in 2011. But now they're here, right in front of your face. And there are more. Believe me, there are more. And this is not a conspiracy about suing our church or the Archdiocese of Igana. This is about righting the wrongs of decisions that affected our island back in 1950, back in 1970s, when we opened immigration up. So what I'm asking the senators to do is, don't play God. You have a tough decision ahead of you in this upcoming legislative session, whether to open these things up or not. My recommendation is, add another year to the window, that these victims have their day in court. Because after that, we're survivors. We're all survivors. We survived the war, and we can do it again. So this is not about, uh, yes or no. This is about unanimous support for these individuals who have come forward. Believe them. If you didn't believe me, believe them. Open your mouth, go and ask the former Commissioners of Aggett. As in closing, I'd like to ask, and I want to thank, the Concern Catholics of Guam, as well as the Laity Forward Movement, all Roman practicing Roman Catholics. I'd like to thank all the individuals who have invested their time, talent, and treasure in order to clean up church on Guam. But I'm going to ask the Laity and this Archdiocese of Igana as well to please protest the Vatican's decision concerning the Diocese of Chalakanoa. And the reason for that, you'll soon find out.
Thank you very much, Mr. Diaz, for your testimony this afternoon and to... The committee will, for the record, continue to receive written testimony 10 days, calendar days subsequent to today's hearing, and then we will finalize the committee report and present it to the legislative body or the committee on rules. The committee will also work actively with the sponsor of the legislation, Senator Blas, in terms of making any amendments to this particular provision, should he deem it necessary. We have one more testimony? Okay. Mr. Tim Rohr, please, if we can, ask you to join us up front. Thank you, Mr. Diaz, again.
Sure. And, and, Tim, if you allow me, just go ahead, Senator. Just so, clarification of everybody, because of the processes here, please, please understand that the inclusion of new sponsors to the bill can only be done on the floor. Okay? So, you know, there are some concerns, and I'm sure there's some people that have asked, that, you know, senators do show the support by asking to become co-sponsors. That can only be done on the floor when the bill hits the floor, okay? So, just so you know.
Gentlemen, I apologize, you may have to, we're having technical difficulties, you may have to share the mic. So, sir, if I can ask you to identify yourself for the record and proceed again.
Sure. Good morning. Oh, good afternoon, sorry. My name is Pierre Taren. I am the president, I'm a new resident of Guam. I live in Dededo. I'm the president of Beautiful Island Trading and also the chairman of the Surveillance Committee of PHPT LLC. I'm a lifelong Catholic, and I was a resident of the state of Minnesota for 15 years. So this legislature that you're putting in is very interesting to me, because I have lived through that for the last 15 years in Minnesota, with very similar issues and very similar concerns from people in the legislature. And I am here in support of this legislation, because it is obvious that, as the witnesses have testified earlier, that there are a lot of issues to be addressed. And beside all the splits and the difficulties that some people have expressed earlier, it is time to move forward. And I think the cost of not moving forward, not only for the institutions of this island, may they be religious or business, is quite high. I have come to Guam for the last 30 years. I have many very good friends here on the island, and I've also known many Chamoros off-island who have left the islands because of those issues. And it has a very high cost for Guam, because those people were individuals of very great quality that decided that they could no longer live here because of what happened to them. So as a lifelong Catholic, but also as a businessman, I understand that the cost and the effects of not acting up on those issues is tremendous, because not only the island is losing opportunities, but they're also losing very capable young people that decide to move away, like most of the witnesses we have seen. They are in Hawaii, they're in California, they're in Arizona. And we have lost many opportunities to keep very talented people here on island, and the island definitely needs this. So I've made the choice to come and live here, and hopefully to continue my businesses here. And it is very important that the legislation goes through to allow corrections where they are needed, and also to prevent any more of situations similar that have happened in the past. I think Senator Klitsky was very detailed in his, in his remarks. As a former student of law, I appreciate that. And I think there are a lot of things we can do. Obviously, the legislation cannot address all the issues. We are all aware of this. But it is very important that something be done, and this is a very good first step, and probably we'll have to come and revisit it in the, in the future. And I want to thank you, Senator Blas and Chairman, to bring this text forward. That's all for my remarks. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Teru, for your testimony this afternoon. Mr. Rohr?
My name is Tim Rohr. I'm a resident of the now-famous village of Aggett. Mr. Klitsky used the C-word, conspiracy. And I want to propose something to consider. In 2010, I was called to a meeting at the Chancery, because I was the Archbishop's attack dog back then, you might remember. And they wanted me to read a statement to the press. The statement was oriented towards getting rid of the organization SNAP, who had a person here at the time that was investigating into these things. At the time, I was not aware of what I'm aware of now, and so I innocently asked, why are we doing this? Why don't we just call their bluff and invite them into the Chancery and examine our files? We don't have anything to hide, do we? The room fell silent, and then mouths started flapping. I realized that I was, they were going to throw me to the wolves, and I walked away, realizing there was something to hide. I kept my mouth shut until 2013, when the Archbishop threatened Father Paul with an arduous and painful closure to his assignment, if he did not immediately resign. And then he took out Monsignor James. You probably all know that I've been at the, in the heart of the beast here for quite a while. It's all part of a cover-up, and it's all connected. And I personally, at this point, have a vested interest in seeing to it that everything's What the gentleman and Mrs. Conception shared is not isolated from everything else. It's all connected. We got close a couple months ago, when we almost revealed the sham cover-up of the publication of a false certificate of title of a property in Jonah. We got real close. I was pushing really hard to expose that, because that property was transferred secretly in November of 2011, to protect that property from people like Walter Denton. Because of the legislation that had passed in that year, at the time, there were, there was a expectation that it would be similar, where it would be institutional liability. So the, the directors of the neocata came in a way, and I can put out, there will be a time when I can show this all on sworn affidavits, or actually people who were present at the meeting. That property was secretly deeded away in an instrument recorded at Land Management, which, of which its title completely covered the intent, but that property was squirreled away, $40 million to $70 million property given away. When Monsignor David C. Kidigua, the Vicar General of the Archdiocese, had published a copy of that, of a false certificate of title, leaving out the instrument that I just mentioned, I investigated and I found out who got that copy, who altered that certificate of title. As you know, Mr. Klitsky got involved at that point. We pursued it to Land Management and all the way to the AG. If we had succeeded in exposing the reason for that publication of the false certificate of title, we might have been able to help these guys earlier, because it was all tied together. However, as you know, the AG completely capitulated on her original advice, which required, required by law, the changing of a certificate of title to proceed through a process through the Superior Court. Aperon knew that if this went to court, it would all come out. Somehow, behind closed doors, the AG worked out a deal with the representative of Aperon and issued a new certificate of title in complete violation of what the law actually requires. We got close. Mr. Klitsky worked his rear end off to do that. I have no idea why the Director of Land Management, who was very cooperative, suddenly was very There is so much subterfuge and lies and everything and pressures that are put on people that suddenly disappear, and testimonies and things are changed. We got close. It's all tied together. And when this is all put together and it all does go to court, everyone, including people in the government who conspired to cover this up, will be exposed. The sad part about it is, it's that kind of crap that made those guys hide for 40 years. It's that kind of stuff. Let me tell you why these people came out. The common talk about the former bill was that it took out the deep pockets, it took out the teeth, so nobody came forward. Let me tell you what. Those people came forward without any bill, without any legislation, without any hope of anything ever happening. It doesn't take deep pockets, legislation, for people to come out. You know what it takes? It took people who cared, that just don't write bills, but people who cared. Over $100,000 of private money has been spent to protect them, because we knew what Aperon would do to them when they came out. We knew we had to have Attorney David Lewin standing next to them when they came out. Who do you think paid for that? Deep pockets? There was no even thought of a bill like this. It was people who cared. They did the work. And so, I'm not going to put up for anybody that says, oh, wow, that bill, you know, we, we neutered it, or we're going to blame some, you know, phone calls from the Archbishop. I happen to know the Archbishop is not even smart enough to know how to amend a bill. No, it took people who cared and who worked and took risks, and people like myself, who have been threatened with lawsuits by an all-powerful Archbishop. But it just can come out. The conspiracy, there is a conspiracy, and it's not just in the church. Oh, believe me, it's in the church right now. Matter of fact, at 11 o'clock, Archbishop Pahn was paid a visit by someone. So there's more. There was rape, there was molestation, and every one of these priests were covering for each other. It's the whole network inside that Chancery. And that's why I, with Bob, before, was not about institutional liability, but now, I see, especially with this replacement that we have, that the only way to hold these people liable is to go after them institutionally. Anybody who aided, abetted, conspired, was involved in any way, shape, or form, with Aperon covering what he did and him covering for them, we're going to take down. And we're going to find out what happened to that certificate of title, too. We're going to find out the corruption that's going on inside departments of the government that have permitted this kind of thing. That's all.
Thank you very much for your testimonies this afternoon, Mr. Rohr. Anyone else would like to provide testimony on Bill Number 326 S33? If not, the committee will continue to receive written testimony for the next 10 calendar days, and then the commitment is that, in fact, this particular piece of legislation will be reported out of the committee. We will be working very closely with the sponsor of the legislation, Senator Frank Blas, and we will take into consideration all recommendations that have been forwarded to this committee by virtue of this particular public hearing and any subsequent written testimony that we receive. So ladies and gentlemen, I thank you again to all those who very courageously came before the committee and publicly shared your story. Thank you very much for the bravery, and we certainly wish you well. Thank you again, everyone. This concludes the public hearing.